Okay, I think that seven o'clock has arrived, so we can start this meeting. Welcome to the Winnetka Village Council Study Session and Special Meeting, October 10, 2023. If everyone would mute their cell phones and any other electronic devices, that would be appreciated, and I'll ask Manager Rob Behan to do roll call for attendance.
Thank you. Trustee Dearborn?
Here.
Trustee Alvinson?
Here.
Trustee Dahlman?
Here.
Trustee Apitoff?
Here.
Trustee Ursick?
Here.
Trustee Handler?
Here.
Okay, next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and Trustee Apitoff will lead us in the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rob. We've now come to the point of the meeting for public comment, and we would ask if anyone in the audience wants to speak about an item not on tonight's agenda, we would welcome you to the podium.
So, I'm here. I've been uncertain if I should become more gentle or more direct, because I feel like there is a disconnect between how the village treats some residents and others, and what it says and what it does. And I don't know what the right answer is. I heard this council up here sitting talking about how taxpayer dollars are so important and we have to protect them, and yet the council gave away land for nothing to private individuals. I heard the council sitting here talking about property rights and how important it is that we protect them, and yet we have street and beaches that have been closed to the public. Our property rights have been taken from us for years, and the council is aware of this and does nothing, because of course that would infringe on like what the people that live next door would like to do with that place. And honestly, and I guess I'm gonna be going towards the harder side, honestly, I'm quite disappointed. You know, there's an old saying that the fish stinks from the head down, and so I look at you all, and you all are part of the council. You all bear responsibility. There might be some that are more open and more concerned, but when the council sits here and doesn't do anything, it speaks to all of you, and you all bear responsibility. And so like the sidewalk that was given away, I hope that a child never is injured again at Nutria, but when that happens, you all will share in that responsibility, because you all had the opportunity to stop that transfer and provide a safe path for students and chose not to. I have, and I'm gonna be very direct, I was at the beach the other week where Mr. Bernal came up to me and said that I couldn't be somewhere, and he said that that was direction that was given to him by the IDNR and the US Corps of Engineers, specifically Mr. Altman and Mr. Hall. Now, I haven't been able to get the IDNR and Mr. Altman to respond, but Mr. Hall has come back and has said, no, he would not have said what Mr. Bernal attributed to him. And what was that? That was the idea that I could be arrested or detained for being in the lake in a construction zone, that I, a citizen of the state, could be arrested for being on state land under some vague authority that the village doesn't have and that the property owners don't have. Again, there is a clear discretion being given to some property owners and not others. There's a clear discretion being given to some tax dollars and not others, and until this council decides that it's gonna represent the entire community and deal with everything equitably for everyone, I'm sorry, you all bear responsibility. And it's sad to me that we aren't doing things to fix the real problems, but are letting those wealthiest of homeowners that want more and more public space and public land get away with it.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience like to come up and share your thoughts on a topic not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to Item 4, which is the Establishment of the Consent Agenda. Does any trustee wish to remove any items on the consent agenda for a separate vote? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the final form of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Rob, thank you. Voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Posed, okay. Now we will have the approval of the consent agenda. Rob, would you read the consent agenda?
Certainly, thank you. Approving an agreement with Safeway Tuck Pointing LLP for repairs to the electric plant exterior wall and Resolution Number R922023 pledging the village of Winnetka to join Cook County united against hate for adoption.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by omnibus vote?
So moved.
And roll call vote.
Trustee Dahlman?
Yes.
Trustee Ursick?
Yes.
Trustee Handler?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Alvinson?
Yes.
Trustee Apitoff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We move on to Item 6 of the agenda, which is the Green Bay Trail Report Presentation. Tonight, Representatives from Lakota Group will be presenting the Green Bay Trail Master Plan, a comprehensive study that was conducted, allowing the village to phase future improvements regarding trail enhancements, increased safety features, and cost estimates. We'll start with Assistant Village Engineer Obed Khalid to review. Thank you, Obed.
Thank you, Trustee Dearborn. Good evening, everybody. Just to introduce myself for the people who don't know me, I am Obed Khalid, Assistant Village Engineer, and this evening with me, our engineering consultant in Lakota Group here to present the report on the Green Bay Trail. Staff would like to review the report with the council and walk through the process, and following our presentation, staff request direction from the council regarding the next step. I would like to start with the quick background. The Green Bay Trail runs along the east side of the Metro Railway Line and runs almost through all the North Shore communities. The trail is major route for bikes and pedestrians to connect with the business districts, surrounding communities, and the Metro train station. The Winnetka portion of the Green Bay Trail is two and a half mile long paved pathway, and currently, Winnetka Park District is maintaining the trail as per the lease agreement with the village of Winnetka. As the Green Bay Trail is an important component of the village infrastructure, to improve the accessibility of the trail and the overall condition of the trail, village engaged Lakota Group to conduct a comprehensive study of the trail and develop a master plan for the enhancement of the trail within the Winnetka limits. Since last year, Lakota studied the existing condition of the trail, coordinated and engaged with the different stakeholders, identify the areas of improvement, prepare the concept exhibits, and the cost estimates. During this study, Lakota worked with the different volunteer groups, Winnetka resident, Winnetka Park District, and general public who use the trail on a regular basis to understand the current use of the trail and the future needs. With that, I would like to turn over to Morgan from Lakota Group for her part of presentation, and request her to walk through the council, the process of a study, and the proposed recommendation.
Thank you.
This is on the same page, you just have to...
Okay. Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'm Morgan Chapman with Lakota Group, a senior landscape architect there. This is just a quick agenda of our planning process and the master plan that I'm gonna go through tonight. So we'll talk about the process, our engagement, analysis, our design strategies, implementation, and discussion. The overall mission of our plan was to enhance the physical condition. First and foremost, it was established off of core values established from the Winnetka Comprehensive Plan, but building on that, we were aiming to enhance the physical condition program and sustainable operations of the trail, evaluate short and long-term physical improvements for the trail, seek opportunities to collaborate, and link with other trail partners and communities along the trail, and consider adjacent land use context, environmental condition, connections and access to the trail from the surrounding street network, neighborhoods, and the business district. So our process included three main phases, analyzing and engagement, visioning, and the master plan. For engagement, we first met with stakeholders, so we held four focus group sessions with village and park district staff. Village helped organize and coordinate the local trail users. We met with residents, adjacent neighbors, business owners, trail stewards, volunteers, and the well-known Green Bay Trail Support Group, Friends of the Green Bay Trail. And then we also collaborated with Friends of the Green Bay Trail to host a pop-up workshop on the trail during their Friends of the Green Bay Trail Day, where we met with active trail users in real time to kind of hear what their values were of the trail, what kind of improvements they would like to see, how they use the trail, and really anything they wanted to talk about regarding the trail. And we also shared three online surveys through the course of the project. The first to kind of analyze the use of the trail and gauge focus on trail improvements, and the second as a follow-up to our first open house, which really was just sharing initial ideas in the form of visual preferences. So no concrete ideas yet, but just trying to like gauge interest. And then our third survey was following our final open house, which engaged participants in evaluating our proposed design solutions. And a lot of our major takeaways and things that we heard were that, you know, the trail to people felt like a linear park. It was also very essential to a lot of participants that maintenance of the entire property be unified between Park District and the village, maintaining focus on safety and minimizing conflicts between different user groups. There's a lot of different trail users, bikes, pedestrians, dog walkers, minimizing those conflicts, designing the trail as if it were one entity owned and managed, and then keeping in mind the trail's regional aspect, and again, finding those opportunities for connection to the regional North Shore community, as well as beginning with the end result in mind, and of course doing what makes sense for Winnetka, very specific. So our analysis focused on three separate diagrams. We broke this out into the ownership boundaries, which show essentially a breakdown between UP Railroad and village-owned and village-maintained spaces. And then we looked at the trail in terms of its site and context and character, and created a trail personality zone map. So this really kind of breaks down the different character areas that are influenced by the business districts or the neighborhood and other site context, as well as a third diagram for the trail slope conditions. For the majority of the length of the trail, we have a pretty steep slope on the east side, as I would say is about two-thirds of the trail, and then the last third is broken up between a transition and an elevated condition, so we'll get into that in a bit. Right here. So we have the steep slope conditions, again, as on the north end of the trail, which basically create what we're referring to as a below-grade condition. So there's a steep slope on the east side, and it's created some drainage and erosion issues and complications just along that slope. And that's for the majority of the trail is characterized by a neighborhood to the east as well, but that does transition into some business district areas as well. About two-thirds of the way down the slope begins to transition just south of the Winnetka Train Station at Elm Street to kind of more of an at-grade condition, where you can enter off of Wilson there, that's kind of the diagram that you're seeing in the middle. And then it transitions all the way down at the Winnetka Avenue Bridge to an elevated condition. And these really just helped us kind of influence our strategies for improvement. So our plan and design improvements were broken down into kind of three strategies: hardscape and maintenance, environmental and vegetation improvements, and activation and signage. And then we also considered for prototype projects, which I will get into as well. And you will kind of see all aspects of those three strategies influenced in each of the Hardscape and maintenance, generally, we wanted to widen the trail. It has a consistent or inconsistent width at the moment, but generally, it's about eight feet with a three-foot maintenance or gravel running path. We don't really suggest changing that, but just rather delineating it by a solid yellow line down the middle to help minimize those potential conflicts between users, and having that consistent three-foot gravel running path. Right now, it does really vary between like one foot, three feet, so making sure that that's consistent all the way through. And then also indicating some opportunities for improved access, whether those are ADA or non-ADA access points, which I will show you some examples of in the prototype strategies. So this is just some sections, again, kind of reiterating our existing condition and how we would like to influence consistency with the width of the path and the gravel running strip, as well as proper delineation in that proposed section. So the vegetation and ecological improvements, generally, we wanted to provide strategic vegetation improvements that would occur all along the length of the Green Bay Trail in the Winnetka Corridor to address issues of erosion, slope instability, invasive species, and lack of biodiversity. It should be noted that we envision improvements would begin at the north end and tie into the successful rehabilitation on the glencho slope, so as to not fight encroachment at both ends, essentially, with the caveat that should another specialty project or prototype plan be identified for development, vegetation improvements would also be considered in conjunction with that project at that time. But generally, we broke down these strategic vegetation improvements based on some of the various slope conditions, so they vary slightly. For the north section, where we have this steep slope condition and a dense tree canopy, we would like, and where we have predominantly private residences, we would like to partially and selectively clear and integrate an upper buffer to improve the health of the vegetative slope, but maintain that strategic screening to the neighborhood. So this section cut kind of shows your, an opaque like canopy tree is a representative of the existing canopy, so we would maintain existing canopy, but open it up enough that we could get light to the ground plane and support additional vegetative growth in native herbaceous and shrub species, as well as integrate new native deciduous and evergreen trees in that upper buffer screen. This second approach is similar. We would selectively, this is generally characterized for the below-grade and at-grade condition, or as it begins to transition, we would selectively clear and establish new native vegetation while promoting strategic views to and from the trail, so you can get that visual continuity, people know where the trail is. Right now, it's pretty screened off, and so in strategic locations where it makes sense, near the business districts, it could be an advantage to open up those views, so people know where they are and other places in town that they can get to. At the at-grade and elevated condition, where we have limited buffer space, it's pretty tight, we would like to, again, selectively clear the overstory canopy, so that we can get understory enhancement and improve the overall health and vegetation while still maintaining the desired like character and feel. A lot of people liked that the trail was, you know, more screened and that you kind of felt like you were in an enclave or an enclosed enclave. So we don't necessarily want to change that condition, but just find opportunities for those improvements. Another strategy in our plan was for activation and signage in strategic locations. So we have this broken down into four categories: people activation, which is essentially opportunities, opportunity areas for largely off-trail kind of gathering spaces, so just right adjacent to the trail, and nothing that would impede trail users, but in areas where we have like a little bit of more space off-trail, providing some areas for people to gather for activities and events. And then wayfinding signage, which would predominantly be opportunities for informational or directional kiosks in key areas to help, like I said, kind of direct users to business districts in town, and also any other regional connections they may want to get to from the trail. And opportunities for educational and historical signage. As we work on vegetative improvements, it could be a nice added touch to include some signage on, you know, what is happening with the restoration and rehabilitation here. And there are also some interesting and intriguing historical remnants along the trail that I think would be interesting to honor and provide signage, so people understand what those are and why they're there, as well as trail access signage. So at the entrance and access points predominantly from at the trail level and street level, so people can kind of key into where exactly those entrances are, and if they're looking for an ADA access, maybe something at the street level could indicate to them the next point that they should look for along the trail to find that. So then we'll get into the strategies in action, which will basically show all of these in four different prototype concepts. So this is our first concept. This is at the north neighborhood we're referring to. This is just north of the Tower Street Bridge, where we are connecting to the trail with a new ADA ramp. You'll see the trail is delineated by the solid yellow line to help keep users on either side, as well as the consistent three-foot gravel running path on the east side, and the slope has been opened so that new native vegetation can flourish on that slope. This particular concept also includes a kiosk and some seating in this node off-trail, so a little activation spot, a little wayfinding kiosk, new ADA ramp, and this case, it is depicted as a concrete structure, but there is another option, you'll see in the next concept, for a more open and airy concept, as well as we're just kind of keeping that buffer zone along the UP and respecting that boundary there, trying not to put too many improvements on the west side, knowing that they have their own maintenance protocols that would require additional partnership to kind of work through if we wanted to consider improvements further on the west. And then in the central town concept, this is at the Elm Street Underpass location, kind of across from the Winnetka Community House. Here, we are showing another ADA access bridge down to the trail from that point. Both of these locations, I should mention, currently have a ramp entrance condition, but it's very steep and is not ADA accessible. So both of these concepts would take up more space, but provide a meandering ADA access path down to the trail. Again, here, you can see a kind of seating node with benches and a wayfinding kiosk, as well as a trail access signage piece with that kind of oval green marker at the top. And then in the background, you can kind of see, we're indicating a little bit of a nature walk. This would be, there's a bit of a widened condition adjacent to the trail here and in a few other areas, so finding those opportunities to maybe meander through a restored or rehabilitated vegetated condition and place some opportunities for educational signage. Again, with this restored slope vegetation condition. This third concept is in the at-grade condition. This is like very slightly south of the entrance along Wilson at the Willow Street entrance, so this is actually on the west side, adjacent to the tracks, but just there are some existing pylons there for the old train line. That's kind of what these concrete plinths, these vertical ones are meant to represent, those existing pylons from the old electric line. And so just using those to maybe put some historical signage and kind of highlighting those as an interesting feature along the trail, and just in general, providing an area of respite or gathering for trail users, as well as the delineated trail and the kind of, you can see a bit of the opened, cleared, vegetated condition on both sides in this And then for the last concept, the south town center concept, so above the Winnetka Street Bridge, there's this elevated condition. So essentially, this is looking kind of like right at the bridge condition, the road would be just underneath where you see those guardrails there, kind of utilizing this open space for a potential people gathering space. You could do some kind of seating element along that open green space on the east there, so left of the page, because we are looking south in this perspective, and just providing some areas of picnic or gathering or yoga, or really any event or activation that trail users might want, but off the trail so that you can still have active users passing by. We would also have a potential trail marker, as indicated by this kind of wooden post here, and some opportunities for benches and bike racks. This one is a bit more built up than the other concepts. We did get into conceptual cost estimates, so this is kind of an overall summary page of the costs. We did also break this down into linear foot cost, so that you may see how much it would cost to do just, you know, a certain portion of the trail in hardscape, or a certain portion of the trail in the vegetation improvements, or in the wayfinding improvements. So these are the summaries, as well as the prototype demonstration projects, conceptual costs at this time. And I think, one more piece here, so for the implementation, the end next steps, we really want to prioritize essential improvements, so we've really heard that maintenance of the trail is key. Everybody who uses the trail wants it to be usable and well-maintained, so those were kind of the key priorities. Implementing low-cost enhancements first, involving the community in any improvements, especially those prototype projects, considering the maintenance needs of any improvements, and installing more costly features later as funding allows. So that's kind of how we established our breakdown of our phases. I should mention the costs are also provided in a phase breakdown, which show essentially how you could take a take at breaking it out into phases over three, five, 10, 15-plus years. That's at the back of our report. Oops, I'm getting ahead of myself. So we do have the phase diagram cost breakdowns, the timeframes of implementation are defined by the priority levels that we heard, high priority within three years, medium four to nine, and then low 10 to 15. It's also important to note to find your key implement... It's also important to note to find your key implementation partners, whether that's volunteer groups or other stakeholders in the community that can provide support, as well as looking for grants and funding opportunities. To ensure trail safety and functionality, it's essential to develop a comprehensive maintenance plan. This is key. It's key to kind of reevaluate that joint partnership with the village and park district staff, to reevaluate that intergovernmental agreement, to make sure the plan is up-to-date and accounts for future improvements outlined in this plan. Obviously, none of these things will work unless that is, that's evaluated and established early on. So, I think that's another key point of the plan, is just to make sure that in perpetuity, there's a good maintenance strategy going forward that includes the intergovernment partners, as well as any stakeholders that you might want to engage. And that's all, so I will turn it back to Obed. Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. So, next, I would like to talk about some potential grants. To secure the potential funding source for this project, staff with the, with the village staff and the park district jointly apply for the following four grants. Unfortunately, this project has not been selected for the local and state grant for this year, but staff will continue to apply those grants in the future years. And also, we are waiting to hear back from the two federal grants which we applied. This slide shows the overview of the approved budget for this year related to the Green Bay Trail. Currently, Forest Department assisting volunteer groups for the dead brush pickup, which is reflected as a maintenance item in line number one. Additionally, the engineering assigned some additional funds to advance the engineering design of the proposed improvement. This amount will be allocated to hire the professional engineering consultant to develop the engineering plans for the construction, once the funding sources are secure and approved. Since we are close at the end of the year, we are not anticipating that engineering will use those accounts for rest of the year, depending upon if we get the grant or not. So, those accounts will be rolled away into next year. And here, in the last, there are some potential next step for council to consider for providing the policy direction related to the Green Bay Trail project. The first is council review and accept this council, concept master plan. Second, Lakota will present the concept master plan to the Winaka Park District for their acceptance. Village and park district develop the new IGA intergovernment agreement. The village and park district to evaluate and prioritize the feature phasing of the project and propose the design work. And in the last, the village and park district will continue to pursue the future funding grant to secure the funding for the project. Just to note, this master plan is conceptual and can only be implemented if the funding is secure and approved. With that, we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Obed. Very much, Morgan. Thank you for that presentation. And we will have the council ask questions that they might have, as well as the public to make comments. I would, I'd make the point that, that this, this project, sort of, the genesis of this rob, remind me, occurred about a year and a half ago or so, when we were sitting around saying, you know, what are the things that residents are interested in? And, and Green Bay Trail, of course, is one of the more actively used amenities that we have in town here. And I think we all noticed that it was sort of waning in terms of maintenance and landscape and so on and so forth. And so, we wanted Lakota Group to sort of bring it together. We work closely, of course, with the park district. You know, we theoretically maintain the bluffside landscaping. They maintain the lower-level trail maintenance and on the west side of the trail. We have this agreement that I think was put together, I think the document said, in 1988. You know, is that as up-to-date as it should be? But anyway, so the, one of the themes that comes through this is the funding of this. And so, this project, I think, is ripe for grant opportunity over time, just because of the nature, the outdoor nature, the public-private use of it and so on. We have people here from some of the, the friends of the Green Bay Trail are here. And you also may recall that over the last two summers, spring, summer, and fall, there's been a very active group of volunteers that have gone down to the trail and done a lot of work in clearing some of the dead wood out of the east side landscape there. And it's been an enormous task. Six or seven gentlemen have been doing this, and they continue to do it. If you go down there today, you would see huge piles of wood and dead brush that's been brought out. And the budget for that, part of the village budgeting this year is to clear that. That's where that $5,000 came from. So, there's been activity going on there, but what you're getting to here is truly, you know, hardscape, landscape, activation, and so on. And so, I think the, the study kind of brought it all together, things for us to think about. And we should now just open it up for council with any questions to Obed or Morgan from Lakota Group, and then we'll go into public, public comment. So, any questions at this point?
I don't know if this, I don't know if this question is for Lakota Group or someone at this table, but I think we have had ongoing problems with Metro maintaining their parts of like, the bridge over by Indian Hill. Am I right about that?
You would be referring to the Union Pacific Railroad.
Yes, okay, sorry.
Yeah, so Metra's-
The train.
Yeah. So, UP, we've been challenged to work with them to maintain their infrastructure. The biggest one is the Hubbard Woods Train Station, which has been delayed significantly by UP, delaying the permit review process that was submitted by Metro. There's ongoing disputes between Metro and UP that we're trying to resolve, but there isn't a clear end in sight yet. There are some Metro maintenance issues at the station with respect to salt usage. And we've been vigilant and staying on them to clean that up. But most of the infrastructure is Union Pacific.
And are we able to proceed with this? And having, you know, and then them having their part undone wouldn't be problematic or anything like that? They'll just get to theirs when they get to it?
Yeah, we would need to look at them holistically and make sure that we're not undertaking improvements that would be impacted, say, by the Hubbard Woods renovations. So, we'd want to make sure we have a good understanding of that schedule. But for the most part, I think we should be able to proceed further north and then south of that area.
Thank you.
Is that sort of what Morgan meant when you said you weren't doing too much along the west side? Because, okay.
Right.
Yeah.
You can come to the mic if you want. Thank you.
Correct. There was consideration given to those ownership boundaries, but in order to kind of, not knowing, you know, what their role is in maintenance. And I know a lot of times, there has been attempts to make improvements on that side, and they get, they get kind of slashed by their yearly maintenance. So, we just wanted to be cognizant of those, those conditions and be able to make contact with UP before making any suggested improvements against that, that property boundary.
A couple of things. I agree on the Hubbard Woods Bridge. Every time I cross that thing, I think twice. Hide the rust.
Put a Band-Aid on it.
Hide the rust. Right. We talked about eight, eight feet and three feet. What is it, what is it currently, the, the path?
It's generally eight feet currently, eight to nine feet. It, it kind of varies just based on how the asphalt was poured.
Is that wider? I mean, I've traveled on a bike many times. Is that, is wider than other? I guess as I'm looking as you go down the trail.
Beyond the Winaka boundary?
There's nothing standard. Every, every summer paved, some is, some is gravel or dirt.
Yeah, it definitely varies significantly throughout the entire length of the-
So, this isn't a coordinated, this is just-
No, this would just be-
Our section of what's going on. And I guess as I look at this and the numbers, I just like, how do we forest rank the real needs of this, what needs to be done down there? You know, seven, eight million dollars is a heck of a number. That came to mind as, if we're going to do this, what do we forest rank to get this in working order and, at least now? And I'm, you know, I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm a fan. I use, I use the trail. I'm just curious, do we have any usage numbers? How many, what, what percent usages pass through versus what percent of Winaka residents using it? I just don't know. I mean, everybody says it's utilized. I just, when I do these types of studies, I like to understand how much is utilized, what the numbers are, how many are Winaka residents that are kind of really using it?
We don't have those numbers in our study.
I didn't think you, but I'd say yes. But that's, that's a reality. I mean, as we look at the, the, how much money we're going to spend, it really is what are the residents use? And obviously, I think it makes sense to do it, but I just want to know, get some perspective. Thoughts on the signage? Don't know how much signage is kind of, I see this as a nature thing. I'm not sure how much, you know, as I saw, $45,000 or $50,000 in percentage. I just don't, can't imagine we need that much signage down there, but that's just my own personal view. I'd love to know what you all think about it. We have a lot of signage in the village now. And then, also the, the main uses for the trail, I assume it's biking, running, and walking. Some dogs do. Heather, Heather, I guess, is there, is there a real other safety issues that have happened down there? Are we, are we having run-ins and accidents and?
We heard a lot of like, conflicts between bikes-
Usually bikes and people, yeah.
And specifically like, e-bikes and, and other pedestrians on the trail. And then also, just at the access points, the visibility coming down from some of those ramps is very difficult. So, we heard a lot of key points of conflict at some of those, those access points.
And it's interesting, it, it is unique. I think each community is, is different. Our community is, there are, you know, going up is a-
Yeah, it's pretty significant.
Yeah, it's a chore, but I think when people actually use business districts or stop for something, it's in areas where you're, you know, you go, you're at ground level in many communities, and that's where most bikers will stop and rest and not necessarily go up for a, a quick view of the business district. You know, our, we are different, which is great. But it, I think we have to keep that, be mindful of when we look at how, what signage we use and how we structure this, how people really use Winaka, because it is such a steeper slope than most. Okay.
This is always so awkward, so I'm going to try and do this. How many total access points are there now? And are there any proposed new access points? Or are we just talking about making some of the access points ADA compliant?
Correct.
Okay.
We're not, I think we had looked at one potential area for a new access point, but it was, it was at trail condition. The rest of them are just improvements.
Okay.
We'd have to pull up the plan to see exactly how many we have, off, off the top of my head.
And then, for the ADA ramp, I like that idea. And I'll, when we get to the public comment, I've got a lot of thoughts about the access point at Hubbard Woods, because I live up there. But would it be bike-friendly? Because it looked like there was a lot of switchbacks, and it looked like it might be kind of a, would it be wide enough?
Yeah, so, we made it wide enough. I think it was about between six and eight feet wide. So, the idea would be that bikers would have to, you know, probably get off their bikes or traverse slowly down the slope.
Okay. And then, for signs, I'm, I'm assuming it would be like, you know, coffee, you know, it would kind of direct you to, when you're down in those sub, subgrade situations, it would tell you what's above. Is that a lot of the idea?
Yeah, and I think the idea behind that, like, wayfinding kiosk, would really only be in maybe one or two key areas to direct to the business district zones near the Winaka Train Station and also the one near the Hubbard Woods Train Station.
Would there be mile, I think, I think I saw an indication of mileage markers for running?
Yep, that was, we heard that as an interest by a lot of survey participants.
Yeah, because I, I, you know, I used to coach girls on the run. And so, from the different schools, they go down there for their timed runs. And so, it's a nice thing to have, I think.
Could be like, small signage?
Yeah.
Close to the ground, but not to be too high.
Yeah.
And I don't think you would go down to the specifics of, there's a coffee shop right here or there. It's more like, here's the Elm Street-
Business district.
Oh, yeah.
It's kind of like high level, but not specific to any of the businesses.
Yeah, because that changes. Okay. And then, the last question I had, and this is more on the survey, because I think there is this issue where there's a lot of people who pass through the village, but I also feel like there's a lot of people like me who have used the trail over time. But there are times when I don't feel secure. And I don't know if that was any kind of responses that you got from the survey or even on the pop-up that, you know, due to the current trail conditions, maybe, you know, people are reluctant to go by themselves down there, especially women?
We did hear a little bit of that. And there were some responses in the survey that indicated some people feeling unsafe down there and some incidences that may have happened down there.
Yep.
We did originally have some kind of ideas of like, lighting along the trail below level. Nothing that would be like, too visually, you know, intense, but just something that might give people a little bit, feeling more security. So, I think that is reflected in some of the prototype strategies.
Yeah, because then it opens it up for people using it for commuting to, you know, during the times of years. You know, whether it's going down to New Trier, opening up a bike path to really encourage people to go to, you know, from Glencoe South into New Trier. Okay. Those were all my questions.
I mean, even with college campuses, I wouldn't mind having something down there that, like at college campuses where you can put, you know, the blue lights where you can-
Well, I think part of it is, is because at some of the entrance points, at the, like, at the Hubbard Woods one, the one I know so well, is, it is heavily wooded. It's very steep. It's a blind kind of, it's not, you know, you're kind of going in and you're, and then, you know, and there has been incidences early in the morning with women running alone. Not recently, I don't think, but that was, one, one incident was 15 years ago. So, you know, I think that, just so there's some thought into the design, which it sounds like there has been, into making it feel welcoming and accessible.
Including bird attacks.
Bird attacks?
The bird attacks.
Been attacked multiple times.
Oh, I've been attacked everywhere by birds. All right, thank you.
Sure.
I have a couple of questions. This is, one of the concepts here is to have the, I like the whole idea of standardizing the eight-foot width with the running path. And we show that we're going to paint the yellow line down the middle. And I, I always say, I use this trail and the ones all the way to Waukegan. I'm trying to think of how many have the painted line. And the reality of how many people follow it, like, if there's no one on the trail, people just bike or walk where they want. And if there are people on the trail, they pretty much fall into right or left. Of course, there's always cyclists and walkers who don't follow that. But one of the things I guess I'm worried about is the, the maintenance of the yellow line. When the yellow line starts to fade, it looks sort of sad, and then people don't see it. Is it really an idea that's consistent with the rest of the trail in other neighborhoods? Or is this something we're going to be doing alone, and does it really work?
That's a good question. You might be a bit of a trendsetter in doing that. I don't know, I don't know specifically if it is implemented in other, in other communities along the trail. In my, my experience on the trail, I'm not sure that I've seen it. But I have seen the delineation line on many other public trails around the country. I do think that it would help. I think it's a good standard of practice. And I think it kind of emulates that the trail is regulated and that there's interest for, you know, people behaving and acting a certain way on the trail with respect to the rest of the trail users.
Well, that's what I wanted to, I sort of like a more natural look, but that's why I asked you if it, if it works.
I, I think him, one, if you go into Glencoe, I think Glencoe has a yellow line at their access points.
So, when you cross the streets-
You cross the street, and you might have 20 feet of a yellow line and kind of guiding people, and then it goes back to natural. So, something to think about.
Yeah. Oh, my other question is, when I look at the Central Town Concept, this seems so open underneath with the elevated in the air. Is that the intent, or is the intent that ultimately some vegetation grows up, or do we keep it?
Oh, I think that's just the conceptual nature of the perspective. I think that we would- I think that we would plant the native species as much as we can in and around that entire structure, to try and get as much vegetated growth in there as possible. You would need to open it up, the tree canopy, in order to construct that, though, so that is why it looks so much more open than existing conditions.
Okay. Okay, that's it for now, I have questions for the group, but we'll do that later.
And I just spaced out my question, oh, accessibility, Indian Hill. So there are a fair amount of New Trier students that use the Metro to get to and from school, and Tina had mentioned about bike access as well. Was there any evaluation, consideration of trying to provide accessibility to the Indian Hill?
We did look at that, but we just thought that it would be due to the, the like constricted land area along that east edge at Indian Hill, there's just not enough space to get in an ADA ramp. You'd be better off trying to partnership with UP to get like an elevator or something integrated in the metro station there, because we're just really constricted on like available land on that side of the trail.
Did you conclude it's just not possible to have some sort of accessible ramp anywhere in that area of the station, or is it, was it just an assumption that we should look at just a vertical?
I think we decide, like, in discussions internally, it was kind of just cost prohibitive.
Got it. Thank you.
I just came back from Germany about a month ago, so I was biking all over Freiburg, Germany, which was great, it's one of the greenest cities in the country, and it's a university town. And I noticed that at the train stations, they had places to park your bikes. Would there be room, if, like if New Trier students take that path down, would there be opportunities to park the bike, even if you can't get it down to grade level to park at the school? Like, is there enough room for parking up there that kids could just, kids or staff or whoever could, you know, leave their bikes? It's probably more secure up there, maybe?
Yeah.
And then walk down to grade level?
Yeah.
Would there be room for bike, at least bike racks?
Yeah, so in that prototype, we do show bike racks, that is pretty minimal, it could be expanded, there's plenty of space up there, so you could do that. And then the existing staircase that you have now has like a cheek wall on the side of the staircase that it kind of duels as like a bike ramp.
Oh, that's right.
Can kind of run your bike down along that track to bring it up and down. It's a bit of a haul, but you can do it.
Okay, thanks.
Kirk, any, my recollection on that Indian Hill ramp, Morgan, is that it's just, we're so landlocked over there along Maple?
Right.
That there's, it's not, it's a terrible ramp, I mean, it's a terrible access point, but there's just not a lot of room on that
Right.
east side to do anything, is my, with the retaining wall and everything else. But anyway, just a couple of questions I had, the, and again, this is all a concept plan, we get that, so nothing here is completely set in stone. The ramp, the ADA ramp at Pine Street, at the community house, to me, looks like enormous and almost over the, over the top, and then the budget on that is much more expensive than the others, nine hundred and fifty thousand or so. Is, is most of that, and I'll bet you may have the answer on this, is most of that cost related to that, that access ramp?
I would have to double check, but I assume so. It's just the sheer, like, like the, the distance and elevation that we have to traverse to get down there at an ADA, like, accessible slope.
Understood, understood.
So it probably could be cinched in a little bit, but it's still a pretty long ways down, so.
Yeah, and I think the ADA concept is fantastic. I don't know, Rob, you know, how many access points are, if you have access points, are mandated to be ADA versus not ADA? You know, I don't know if each one of them has to be, or they do, or not.
You have to, not at each one, but we do have to look at the Illinois Accessibility Code. So there's ADA accessibility at the Elm Street Station with elevators, there's elevators planned for Hubbard Woods, and then of course, there's the other access points, if, you know, if you can look at them geographically, disperse them at, you know, the right locations so that at least there's some access points up and down the trail. So, it doesn't have to be all of them, though.
If there are elevators, I think that covers, that's, I think. Yeah, I mean, the more the better, but that one might be a little over the top to get it to be ADA compliant.
Right.
There's also rules with the Accessibility Code of the ADA about practicality, where if the cost is so prohibitive, then you are not required to necessarily bring it into full compliance with the ADA. So we'd have to look at other options, distances, but then eventually you do the cost benefit analysis, and, you know, if you're, if the putting in the upgrades is a hundred thousand, and it's nine hundred thousand to do the ramp, then you're not generally required to do it.
Okay.
So, but we can provide, as this goes further down the path, we're happy to provide some more guidance on exactly what the requirements would be and what it would look like as you get into planning specific aspects of it.
Okay. You're good, thank you, Ben.
Trusted here, when I just had one thing.
Yes.
As we start to move forward with the design, we'll take a look at each of the locations that possibly has some ADA accessibility for it. So in other words, yeah, even at the Elm Street train station, we need to make sure that it's accessible from the lower at pad area or the trail to get up onto the platform to get to the elevator.
Right.
So we'll evaluate all those sections, so we can kind of get into the nuts and bolts of all of it.
Okay, I mean, it's obviously an issue, and I think we would all want as much as possible to be ADA compliant, but in some cases, it may not be as practical as others.
Well, Bob, can I just ask one follow-up question? Because one of the things I had noted is that the Hubbard Woods one, the Hubbard Woods is a concrete ramp with retaining walls, whereas the one in downtown is a boardwalk with ramp railing and guard walk, and that, downtown one is six hundred thousand and the Hubbard one's four hundred thousand. Is there a reason one is boardwalk and one is concrete? Is it the terrain? Is it the cost?
I think primarily, we were just wanting to show a range of approaches.
Okay.
Yeah, either one could be done at either location.
In general, is one approach less expensive than another?
I think it probably depends on the site conditions realistically, I don't know if I want to say for sure one would be less.
Okay, and I understand its concept, so that's.
Yeah, a pure type of a, a pure type of a ramp is a lot cheaper than a retaining wall type of a system. It just depends how ornate you want to get.
Which lasts longer?
Both actually can last the same, except with a retaining wall type system, you're filling it in, it's concrete, it has a different look and appearance. Now, it depends on what you're using it for, too. If you're using the switchback or the retaining wall as an actual retaining component to actually stabilize the bluff a little bit, or in this case, the steep slope over there, then it has its benefits. If you're just using straight piers, it's just literally supporting the piece. So again, as we start to get into the nuts and bolts of it, we'll evaluate not only the corridor piece, but also what's the condition of the slope through there. So for example, near the Lincoln parking lot, we've had some areas where we've had some sloughing of the slope. When they came through to build the trains, they literally just excavated it and placed the dirt on the side, so it's, so we'll take, yeah, we'll take a look at what methodology's going to help stabilize it, too.
Okay, good, thank you, thank you.
Why don't we, at this point, oh, go ahead, Tina?
Bridget. I don't know how related it is, but what body, we had talked about when we were making the 2040 Plan, about as bikes become electric and scooters become electric, like, I'm guessing motorcycles are not allowed on the Green Bay Trail, but I don't know, is that state law, is that whatever? Do other villages have restrictions on electric vehicles on their parts of the Green Bay Trail?
I think so, I've seen no motorized, no bike, motorbikes on several.
Oh, how about scooters?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think there's some, I think to get a definitive answer, we'd have to survey and find out for sure.
That's a good question.
But generally, it's good practice to prohibit them, just because the speeds at which they can attain versus a bike or somebody walking or running, it's a conflict. Yeah, I know.
But they, but that, but a motorized vehicle probably ought not be used for commuting on the Green Bay Trail. I mean, I've been on one of those, it's the same as a motorcycle.
Well, I know.
So then if we have, if we had sixty percent of the bikes on there that were electric, then everybody else is like, or not, you know, motorized, then everybody else is maybe off. I think it'd be good to find out what the best practices are for the remainder of the trail, and just at least consider that.
My only other question was, and this goes back to one of the original plans for one Weneka, so at the Elm Street Station, the village owns, you know where I'm going? Okay, all right. Because I really loved that plan that had the parking that came out to the platform down at Elm. Is there room to put a ramp there to have, because what I do like about this plan is how it does create like this open space to help elevate people up to the business district, right? Because we know how those bikers, me included, but other people who are road bikers love to stop, you don't get a coffee, you see them at Pete's, it's so wonderful, right? You know, people have a place. Would there be room for that right there, do you think?
I think it was.
Because it's village-owned, right?
Yeah, I think it was one of two locations that was evaluated in the past.
Okay.
It was either between Elm and Oak, or it was Elm and Pine. It just, one way or another, to get up to the top, to get to the businesses through there. So it was one of the areas that.
Oh, okay, so that may be a potential. Okay, then that would avoid the, that big structure by the community house. Okay, I was just curious, thanks.
Anyone else before we ask for public comment on this? Okay, why don't we ask for anyone in the public who would like to speak on, on this topic, on the Green Bay Trail? Please come up, introduce yourself, and give us your thoughts. And we did receive some public comment earlier from Elisha Gray, we have that here, Elisha, so you can elaborate on that or not, if you would like. Okay, come on up.
Hi, my name is Ann Riley, I'm actually president of the Friends of the Green Bay Trail, and worked quite extensively for many, many years on the northern portion along Glencoe. I thought I would just come and say a few things. I applaud what Weneka is doing and the effort with the plan, and I think Lakota has done a great job in kind of laying out some options, some really good detailed options that I think are, will add a lot of value to the trail. A couple of things that I thought I would address, we mentioned the Union Pacific and the challenges with the west side. I thought I would talk to you about the partnership that we have had with UP. We work quite extensively with the village of Glencoe to obtain approvals to, to put things in initially. We have agreements with them to help us with flagmen, for example, to come in and stop the train if we need it, to be stopped when we're working out there. It actually is working quite well. The challenge with the west side is it's typically more limestone, so you just have to make sure that the vegetation that you're putting in is, is more, you're more thoughtful about the, the types of vegetation that you're putting, that it will tolerate that limestone. I also wanted to stress, and I know that Morgan said it several times, the maintenance issue. Initially, when you're putting in new vegetation, you need to water, 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 right? And anywhere on the trail, there are very few access points for water. So I didn't see anything on the plan for any kind of fountains or, you know, for, for the, either residents to come and use, we have, you know, kind of dog areas also for water, but also for the people that are maintaining that, the trail, to make sure that you have enough water availability. Then the other thing to consider is, this is a huge investment for you. So over time, you will need either horticulturalists or ecologists to help you, give you input and feedback for really good maintenance of the trail. So just consider that as a long-term investment for this, again, really valuable piece of land that you're, you're putting your efforts into. One of the things that, that we have for maintenance is, we do our own fundraising to put efforts into the vegetation on this area of the trail that's north of Weneka. But we do have partnership agreements with the village and the Park District to help with that funding, but that's another way over time, you know, to kind of help with the, the maintenance costs that you will have. And one of the other things I wanted to mention, I agree with several of the comments about the low signage, just because we do like to keep it natural and to have kind of respect for the nature, natural part of the trail, and to be able to have that natural beauty come out rather than the signage. So I don't know if you had any questions for me?
By the way, this is our lead volunteer of dead wood clearance in the Green Bay Trail.
I wouldn't say lead, I'm the only one who's stupid enough to always show up.
You're the lead, Julian.
A few observations, and I would point out that I've been using the Green Bay Trail on a very regular basis for a little over forty-two years now, and the analysis for purposes of decision-making shouldn't be based simply on how many residents of Weneka use the trail, because we have an obligation to the, to all the communities that participate in the trail, and the analysis should be more along the lines of how many people use the trail, because I use the trail all the time, in Highland Park, in Glencoe, in Womet, so we should do an analysis based on total usage, not just do Weneka residents use the trail. But tying in with that is, one of the most important factors should be accessibility to all Weneka residents. And my number one observation is that the plan does not provide for any additional new access points. And there are several access points in the Hubbard Woods area between Tower and Scott, and then it picks up again at Pine going south, and there's several spots there. So those two chunks are fine, but there's no access from Tower Road to Pine, which is probably at least a third of the length of the trail, if not more. And I would imagine it's probably not a mile, but not too far off of a mile, with no entrance whatsoever. And the study that I saw, and that we saw, made no mention of additional access points, and the logical access point would be Eldorado, which is roughly equidistant between Pine and Tower. And I, and I realize that it may be difficult, but it is something that should be given serious consideration, because the goal should be to make it an asset for everybody, and if you have to go a long distance to get on the trail, you're not going to use it. Finally, our comment on stripes. Having run as far north as Lake Forest, I can attest that I've never seen a stripe in the middle of the, of the path, and I also envision someday, somebody puts a stripe in there, and then it's the Park District saying to the village, no, it's your turn, and then the village is saying to the Park District, no, it's your turn, as the paint peels and it looks like crap. So I would be very much against a stripe, just leave it alone.
Well put, thanks, Julian.
Hi, Elisha Gray, you probably all know me, because I've been here about the trail so many times, and I sent you a little list of things that you may want to consider regarding accessibility, the railroad, maintenance, how you should structure. The best agreement is for one of you to do the whole thing. That gets done. is for one of you to do the whole thing. That gets done. But also, I want to thank you for your putting time and money into this. I think you said it best, Robert, this is a nature project. And there are prototype and accesses to it, and those are very important. But you can see from the dollars, and you can see from the length and the space, this is a nature project. And then I think you are using euphemism for selectively cull. Are you going to leave one buckthorn on that trail? And if you don't, you're doing a massive culling. But you can remedy that by planting new trees and bushes. That's what was done in Glencoe. So it can be done. The slopes are difficult, and you know that. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Elisha. Anyone else like to comment before we bring it back up here for some additional thoughts? Okay, with that, we'll close the public comment. And I think that what we, and Obed had mentioned at the beginning, we need, if we would like to, to give the staff direction on next steps and where to go. Maybe I'll just give my two cents on this to start. Some of it is sort of getting the low-hanging fruit going here. We need to work with the Park District for sure on this. As much as it would be nice to have one group do it, we are in bed with the Park District on this one. And Christina, I think that we need to have, you know, our staff and your staff and your board take a look at this plan, take a look at our intergovernmental agreement, and see if it is working the way we want it to work. We should update it. We need to get that in place because I feel like some of this is just not, you know, occurred as if we all hoped it would over the last several years. Not pointing any fingers at all, but we just need to look at that part of it. I think that we need to think about this, how we're going to fund this. It is expensive. And, but, I think it's also, in talking to Rob a little bit, and Rob can maybe elaborate on this, it is an optimal kind of a project for public funding, for grants. It is outdoors, it's nature, there's public benefit, it's intercommunity involvement. As Julian said, there are people from up and down the North Shore using the trail. We're putting together a plan. The Lakota Group put together this game plan with some cost estimates. We can now actually put that in front of grant providers and go aggressively for that. And again, from my perspective, it would be the hardscape, get the, try to get the infrastructure, you know, whether it's, you know, water, drainage, think about, you know, how we, you know, improve the maintenance, make it consistent, the running path, the biking path, et cetera, et cetera, deal with issues like the e-bikes and so on, and sort of tackle that, show some improvement, and then continue on with exploring how we're going to do the landscaping. I mean, that's a, that's a real challenge. I mean, if you go up and down, there is extensive amounts of invasive species in there, but it's a different, it's a different topographical sort of layout than Glencoe is. I mean, we have a different sort of residential structure that abuts the path and all this, and Glencoe doesn't have that as much. So I think that is something we have to look at. But from my standpoint, I would advocate getting going on some of this work that we can get done because it seems to me this is the kind of project that could just, we could have a nice plan here, and then it could go into the dustbin of nothing. And I think we should try to figure out a way to make some initial progress. And again, I think that if we can do that, and I would also say, maybe we can try to figure out a way to condense that timeframe from 15 years. I mean, 15 years, I mean, that, you know.
We'll be able to read you things.
Yeah. So maybe there's a way to compress that, Jim. I don't know if, you know, we can kind of think about that a little bit. Again, it's predicated on getting funding. And to the extent we could go after the funding aggressively, we might get it. Yeah, that's exactly right. So anyway, I think that, and others may disagree or agree with this, that direction should be very specific on what we would like to see in the near term here, and try to, again, work with the Park District to come up with some agreements on where we can go within the next couple of years or so. That would be my thought. But others?
I'll jump in. Actually, I want to continue where Tina left off. I agree that we need some sort of accessible access near the Elm Street Business District. I mean, I see this as an opportunity to promote our village and to encourage people that use the trail that aren't from our village to come and frequent our businesses, to hang out in our downtown. Nothing against the Pine Access, because I do use it, but I feel like that's more of a neighborhood-used access point. And if we can keep an accessible access there, improve that, great. But if we had to choose, if budget's an issue, and I hear the comment about the distance between the Tower Road and Pine is a long distance. I actually live, I back up to the tracks along there, so it doesn't bug me that much just because I'm close to the Tower Access. But, and I think there's a lot of residential structures. And I think to answer the question about Eldorado, because I live just a handful of houses up the street from there, I don't know if there's a physical way to create an access point at Eldorado. But I would say, just back on the access points, if we can connect to our business districts as a priority, I think that'll be a benefit to our tax base, our revenues, businesses, et cetera. I would also, just in terms of execution, if we had to pick, I would say accessibility is probably my, from my viewpoint, the priority in terms of, I mean, we have a trail. It's not great, doesn't look great, especially when you compare it to our neighbors to the north. But it's usable today. And if we had a limited budget or we had to prioritize, it's being able to provide full accessibility to the trail for all residents, I think that would be my priority. And I think there's probably a way to implement that, instead of just looking at sections based on, you know, one, two, three sections, but prioritize based on scope. Getting accessibility in first, and then focusing on those other elements, like, seconding what you said, Bob. And then I would, third, I would encourage us to evaluate whether it's through this project or with Metro to get an accessible access at Indian Hill. It sounds like we can't ramp it, but if there's another way to either put elevators in or improve that station down the road where we can have that, I think that's an important piece. There are, like I said, a fair amount of New TruR kids that use that, that train station, and whether it's getting bikes off the train to school, leaving them at the op deal is fine. But for those folks that aren't mobile, right now, it's not an option for them to use that mode of transportation. Those are my comments. Thank you.
I'll just go around here, because I think I would prioritize accessibility too, because now that you mention it, it's always like tough for me to go on a run because typically I need to bail out right around Eldorado, like to do something, and I can't. You get stuck. And I think that is a real concern, because that's a long stretch. And I think if we could figure out, even if it's just a stairway somewhere to break up the access, I think that would be great. One of the things that I see in my neighborhood, and I don't know if anybody else sees this too, is just, it's been a sea change with the amount of bike usage. I think it was triggered by the pandemic. I think it was also a generational thing. There's all these young families that have moved into our neighborhood that commute and take their kids to school, preschool, sometimes two, three miles away on these e-bikes. And it's not because it's, they can't afford to have a car, they just prefer to take the bike. And I think anything that we can do to help in kind of the connectivity and making life bikable in the village, so that somebody could actually take their, unfortunately, it is an e-bike, right? Because they're going long distances. But they're, you know, they're the e-bikes that can take three kids, right? And they're going-
Are you talking about the ones that have the big cart in the front?
There's those, but they're also on the back that have these long things.
Those are e-bikes?
Those, a lot, a lot of times, they are.
I didn't know that. I thought they were just regular pedals.
No, like, there's four families in my little circle on, I think, four, maybe they're slightly out, but they're always whipping through there, taking their kids to school on the back of a bike. So I think that, you know, however we get into the conversation, I think the more we create the opportunities for people to get quickly downtown, and a lot of people do like taking the Green Bay Trail, whether it's getting from, you know, north part of Winnetka, south part of Glencoe, and kids just taking their bikes on the Green Bay Trail to quickly get down to New TruR, that would be a great thing, I think. And I would think there would be sustainability grants, or maybe the opportunity to partner with the school district to try to, you know, enhance that. And then there's, of course, all that money, Federal Surface Transportation Board money related to the rails to trails, although this was converted a long time ago to a trail from the rail, and it may not be STB funds. There are those sorts of dollars out there, because I've seen them in other communities. So I think if we come up with, for me, it's the priority of accessibility, making some of those entrances safer. I think that's really important. Lighted, or at least cleared out, so they're not so scary, so people, more Winnetka residents know what, it's there. A lot of people don't even know it's there. And then to, you know, so I follow your priorities. But I think if we, even if we don't have the money to fund it now, if we plan for it, and if we go after the grants, I think, then it will manifest it and will happen. So those are just my thoughts. I think we're all in alignment, though.
Rob? All right. Okay, Bridget?
I agree that we should start with what we can start with, and I, the access sounds great and everything. Though, someone brought up water, and that is important. Like, I think about, I've seen there was a house that put in like probably $25,000 worth of Barbequitas and then didn't water them, and then they were all brown and dead. So we do want to make sure, I think right now, the way the Park District does it, I think, is they have a truck with like a 500-gallon thing of water, and they go to where trees need watering throughout town, and I think they go on the Green Bay Trail. So I don't know if that is good enough, or if we need to have water spots. Spots, water spots, that's the official term.
They bag the trees.
They bag the trees. But we can't bag like the entire, once we start. It's just, we do have to think about the water. And if what they have is good enough, that's fine, but that also might be really expensive in and of itself, because you're paying the people to drive the truck to water all of these plants that are going to take like probably a year to really take soil. And with everything else, the landscaping's the most expensive. So I think it is easier to start with all the other stuff, although it's not as exciting as the trees.
I just want to clarify something. We've used the term accessibility, and I think, I know, it sounds like you were referring more to ADA accessibility, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then Tina, you talked about, it sounded like accessibility meaning just, I want to be able to access the trail more often, even with a staircase?
I think it's both.
Both, okay.
I would love to see more access, because I think one of the reasons why Winnetkaans don't, a lot of people don't know about it and use it, is because I don't think we have enough access points, or they're hidden, or, but then having the ability, because that, one, and just to clarify, I'm not going to steal your time. When you come into the Tower Road one, it's like, if you have small kids or anything, it's like, oh, God, I hope they don't kill somebody when they come down that, because it's a very steep ramp. So I think that, you know, an access point, but also making some of these points accessible, safer, ADA accessible, but also bike accessible.
Oh, okay. So I just wanted to clarify.
It's all of that.
Because right now, we have an elevator at the train station on Elm Street, right? That if someone wanted to actually bring their bike up through the elevator or was in a wheelchair or something, they can get down to the trail. So we do have one point in town now where they, someone can get down or up to the trail. Is that right?
Yeah. And we just, as Jim mentioned, we just need to make sure the elevator access to the platform, platform to the trail.
Trail works.
Right. We need to make sure that the ramps are there.
Okay. So that could be a shortlist item temporarily if we have to phase this out. It sounds like it. So I, I mean, I have to say, I, well, certainly, I, that's why I want to make sure we could temporarily get that. But I agree, I like the idea of having the trail, really, the hardscape be well-done, send a very nice, you know, have a very nice image for people coming through town. And I also agree that, to me, the second priority that wraps up in that is making especially the business districts easy and attractive for people to stop, either park their bike down there or get up there and stop in town. I mean, I know I like to do that when I'm biking. It's a little easier in other communities. So how we phase that, those are the, to me, those are the priorities.
Okay. One of the issues that we should probably look into, Jim and Rob and Obed, is talking to our friends, the Friends of the Green Bay Trail that are here, and see sort of how Winnetka could be involved with the organization, whether that makes sense or not. There's a lot of, I mean, we talk about the watering, and they could probably go through chapter and verse on their relationship with Glencoe, and how Glencoe actually did the watering of the plans for the first couple of years, as I recall, or something like that. So, you know, that is, that's something that we should gain knowledge of, and how we might be able to work with the Friends of the Green Bay Trail on this. And maybe there could be some fundraising. You know, they have people at the Botanic Gardens that they've worked with. I mean, there's, there's knowledge here we could tap into. So I think we should not let that opportunity go unmentioned, because there is, there's a wealth of knowledge with that organization. So I guess where we are in terms of staff direction, I mean, you're hearing about accessibility. We definitely have to approach the Winnetka Park District about our agreement, about their thoughts of this master plan. I don't know when you do that. Do you make the changes, or give some thought to the accessibility and then go to the Park District, or go to the Park District with this, and then with some of our thoughts?
The plan is in pretty good form, I think. Present the plan with the feedback summarized from this meeting, and then if there's any changes that we want to make, then you do one set of changes. I think that would be a good way of going.
That makes sense.
Yeah. And then we see what the reaction is, the reception from the Park District, and then we go from there. But hopefully, not too much grass grows under our feet to get to some of the thoughts that were talked about around this table.
This is a great project.
So I think it's a project that-
And it's one that does have multiple grant opportunities for. I mean, if you look on page 55 of the report, it talks about OSLED grants, the Park Grants, but also ITEP is a possibility. And, you know, if you get a bunch of these kind of going in succession, you might be able to bank some, enough revenue to get some projects done.
Well, that's why I was focusing a lot on the bike traffic, because that green transportation link, I think you can tap into some nice grants there.
Right. And the congressionally-directed spending that was on the slide for $887,000, that's a maybe. If Congress can get a budget done, and they'll actually keep congressionally-directed spending, because that was just recently reinstated not that long ago. So if that stays, it's a real possibility. If it doesn't stay, then obviously, it's on the chopping block.
Under our current IGA with the Park District, how would this kind of project be paid for? Is it 50/50? Or does our current IGA not even address major?
Yeah, I think we'd have to look at how we, the IGA would have a significant section on maintenance, so that maintenance is done at the proper scale with the right efficiencies, right? And then as we look at capital projects, we would have to decide who would take the lead on what kind of capital projects, and then ask for a funding share. And so I think we'd take it project-by-project basis.
Okay.
I think is probably the way it would go.
Yeah. And obviously, we'd look at a new agreement.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's, you know, it's served its purpose. It's stale. It's time to redo it.
So, and to that point, Rob, from a grant application standpoint, are we in a stronger position if we're going arm-in-arm with common motive with the Park District?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I mean, again, I think that we, you know, this is, this is, you know, an asset that is part village, part Park District. And hopefully, we can all come to agreement on that, and then we can go after the money. So do we have enough direction here?
We got enough.
Obed?
Yep.
Jim?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Closed session, none. And adjournment. May have a motion to adjourn.
Second?
We got three seconds. Voice vote? All in favor?
Hi.
All right. We stand adjourned.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody.